Hello and welcome to the Tuesday, July 25th, 2023, meeting of the Air Planning Board. Before we vote on approving agenda, I want to suggest an additional item at the very top. I just want to welcome our new town planner and also do some acknowledgements. Is that acceptable? May I have a motion to approve the agenda with the addition?
Move to approve the agenda as altered.
Seconded.
All in favor, oh, I'm sorry, discussion, hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, unanimous. So, the moment we've been waiting for. Now, I'm not gonna, I don't have a long introduction for Danny because you, you met him when we interviewed him.
Yes.
But I just, I want to say, welcome Danny.
Thank you.
This is your first planning board meeting here. And I want to say that already, within just a week and two days, Danny has already not only contributed to all the ordinary intake and reports and helping us write decisions and findings, he's also taking on a project of his own initiative, like, for instance, putting up the actual schedule of meetings and hearings and including the due dates for when, what you need to get in, the applications in for either of those, plus an explanation of what's the difference between the two. And there are other projects that he's working on that he'll talk about in a little bit. So just first, I want to welcome Danny.
Thank you.
The other thing I want to do is that in the, we've had, we've been working with out-of-town planner for two and a half months. And the only way that we could do that was, one, first of all, I want to thank you, my colleagues on the board. You've been very patient with me and very patient with the process, and I want to thank all of you for your help and support in getting us through. But there are other people I got to thank. At the top, I want to thank Robert and Carly in the Town Manager's Office, particularly Carly. I was on the phone with her pretty much every other day or every day, looking for support and help. And Robert, too, has been, had been incredibly encouraging and supportive. Then I absolutely would be remiss if I didn't mention some of the town departments that have been very helpful to us. Both Dan Van Skalkwick and Matt Hernan from DPW have been absolutely essential in really helping us push projects to, to the finish line and also help us with things that I just didn't have the background knowledge. I also want to thank Charlie Schultz from the, the building inspector, too, for his support and help during this time. I have, if I miss anybody, it's, it's totally accidental and it's, it's a flaw on my part. I mean no insult. I also definitely want to thank Samantha Benoit, who even though she's relatively new here, had been, helped us with all the administrative tasks. And finally, last but not least, I have to thank Heather, who has not only supported us but doing our minutes, but often was the resource, the backstop when Sam didn't know. Heather often did. And of course, Heather was our eyes and ears on Air Solar, too, when we needed it the most. Thank you. So I, thank you, Heather, for, for all your help. Did I neglect anyone, colleagues? Did I do, did I miss anyone?
I would like to thank you, because that's not, that's not an easy role that you've also done and you've continued to be approachable and keep us moving. So thank you.
Well, thank you. Thank you. Okay, with that said, the first item of business is the Easy Street Homeowners Association. Sir, would you be, are you, are you here for that by any chance?
Yes, I am. Steve Marriachi.
Come on up.
For Easy Street, I'm one of the trustees.
Excellent, come on up. Danny, can you take us through this here?
Yeah, so there was a, the gentleman from Easy Street and the HOA have taken a vote on the termination for the HOA. And in the agreement, it states that they need to get 80% of the lots to vote yes to be able to terminate it. That's one of the prerequisites. And the other one was that the road must be accepted and the, any easements that were on the properties would be turned over to another, a substitute entity, basically. And so the town has already accepted the roadway in 2013.
Okay.
And then the DPW has already accepted the easements and taken them over and has started to maintain them. At this point, the planning board, based on the termination article, it just states that the planning board must approve the termination.
Okay, great. And the only reason that we didn't do this at the previous meeting is that I wasn't really clear on what the law was and what our, our, our role was in this issue. So we did approach Town Council, and the council assured us that all we had to do was, just as Danny described. Do any of the members of the board have any questions? Yes, sir, Jeff?
I don't have a question, but I'd also like to just make, if I can.
Please.
Say further. The other thing that we didn't get a chance to dig in, we didn't get a chance to dig in on this prior to the last meeting, just because of timing and stuff like that.
Sure.
And giving us two more weeks of time gave us an opportunity to kind of circle the wagons and talk to the DPW, Danny not being here. So we have to have an opportunity to come down and take a look at it, because it, so I also appreciate that, because we want to make sure, you being a town resident, you also don't want to get a pig and a poke. So we had to figure that out, too.
Appreciate that. And also, getting the DPW to take over the easement part of it, with the pandemic, it was three years. So when I heard that it was, the meeting was tonight, it's fantastic. I mean, so, you know, I appreciate, you know, the, the speed that it's moving along.
And be honest with you, the town has been back and forth on these things. This is a critical piece of infrastructure that protects your properties and protects the town's property. And oftentimes, they go without the proper maintenance, because you're going to move out, someone's going to move in, then I could see the paperwork, don't even know that, so.
Correct.
We just got to dot, dot the, dot the.
Yep, I appreciate that.
The i's across the t's. So thank you.
Yeah, okay, well, thank you. If there's no further discussion, I'd like to move to a vote. Do I have a, I, I need a motion to approve the dissolution of the HOA as written in the decision that Danny crafted.
So moved.
I need a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Yes.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, there are no nays, it's unanimous. Thank you very much. Have a wonderful evening.
I'm going to ask you a question, Mr. Chair. You need to take care of this and sign it.
I do believe so.
So I just left it as kind of a draft version. I was going to finalize it once the vote was done.
Oh, and you wanted to write, okay.
Yeah, I just didn't want to assume it.
So, yeah.
And I can get in contact with.
Yeah, and you're going to, you're going to need this, a copy to go to record with.
The motion was made by Jeff, right?
I made the motion, Mr. Diskin.
I'm just doing this notes to help you. And then Ken did the, all right. And, and we made a, voted to approve.
Unanimous, yep.
All right, I'm just doing this to make it your life a little easier.
And on the board members, please.
Zip.
On the board members, please, would you delete the second F and my name?
I'm sorry.
Oh, yes, no worries.
Oh, yes.
My apologies. That's okay, Danny.
The second F.
I said Danny with two N's, so.
The HOA is now DOA.
Thank you very much.
We're welcome.
Have a good evening.
All right.
Enjoy your long trip home.
So, so the next, next item on the agenda is something I know almost nothing about, but fortunately, we have a member here who does and has a brief presentation for us. We'd like to take a vote. And this evening, we need to have a planning board representative on the Devon Study Committee. And I believe that Jeff has nominated himself. So he'll do a little presentation, and we'll follow that with a vote. Jeff, the floor is yours.
So if you haven't been in town since 1993, you know nothing about 498 of the Acts of 1993. Mass General Law 490, anyway, so on May 2nd of this year, this is the background from this year, at the Select Board meeting, this was an, an item on their agenda, which is the Air and Devon's 2033 Study and Report Committee. The opportunity to serve, they put out the word for the town of Air through the Air Select Board, and they offer to the Air Town Manager, please notify the residents of Air of this noteworthy opportunity for local civic services as an appointed member of the Air Plus Devon's 2033 Study and Report Committee. This is why it exists. The introduction, and, and guys, I did not pull the entire law out. I pulled out a small portion of Section 23, so I can explain it. Again, Chapter 498, Section 23, Acts of 1993, a permanent governance structure. Honored before July 1st, 2030, the Commission, Devon's Enterprise Commission, the Boards of Selectment of the towns of Air, Harvard, and Shirley, with the advice of the planning boards, and the Bank, Mass Development, shall initiate a study, here and after called "The Study," concerning permanent government structure, the ongoing operation and administration of Devon's. I have added emphasis on this just in a couple places. The study shall evaluate alternative structures for government, ownership and operation of open space, recreation, and other lands and facilities, infrastructure, easements, equipment, and records, with such alternative structures, including by not limited to, and that is actually what the law says.
It doesn't say but, it says by.
That is actually what it says, there may be a typo, I don't know. I double-checked it, doubled it twice, John, I bet you. Town government and joint entities or combinations thereof, or the bank and joint entities or combinations thereof, or the bank and the commission, and shall identify transition costs and further investments needed. During the preparation of the study, public participation shall be encouraged and public hearings held. The committee will coordinate and work in partnership with the Air Select Board, the Air Planning Board, emphasis added by me, all municipal departments and committees, contracted study and report project consultants, fellow municipal officials and committees in the towns of Harvard and Shirley, the Devon's Juriditional Framework Committee, which I know you are all aware of, the Devon's Enterprise Commission Staff and Board, DEC, Mass Development Staff and Board, the Monstusive Regional Planning Commission, and the residents of the town of Air. And, Mr. Chair, as you said, as you pointed out, the commission, the committee, the study committee is being put together. They asked for letters of interest to be submitted. I was at the Select Board meeting, I submitted a letter of interest. There was some discussion on what would make up the committee.
Yeah, good question.
So they had bantered around some number of members, I think it was seven, I, I wasn't around for that. They had talked about the necessity of having somebody on the planning board. It was never actually said. I'll tell you what happened there. Well, they had a lot of member, a lot of people, led a lot of interest. It's really cool. Our, our guy from APAC sitting in the cabinet, Barry Schwartzel, is a member of the committee.
Oh, good, yep.
Yep. So I can't quote all the names of the people, because I don't know them, and I've asked for a listing at some point, I'll tell you in the future. But Select Board was in a, had, had a problem on their hands. They had too many people in the room, wanting to be on the commission, on the study committee. So I sat down and Scott Hood said, Select Person Hood said, "Are you here as the planning board member or as a citizen?" And I said, "Well, Mr. Chair, I have spoken to the Chair of the Planning Board about this and told him of my interest in it, I was going to submit." And he was very supportive of that. So whether or not you guys want it, and I'll give it up in a second if someone else wants to do this, I was appointed as a planning board member. That's where we go. There's more to come. The first committee meeting will be next month. We don't even know what we're going to do, because part of what the committee has to do is.
Find the structure.
Figure it out, define the structure. Really, what it comes down to is, we've got to find a way for Devon's to work for the three communities that own it. Lancaster, by the way, does have a section of Devon's, they have asked not to be involved. Lancaster's section is part of the.
South Post.
Huh?
South Post.
It's part of South Post, and it's a part of South Post where they use the big munitions, where they, they've got like the, the howitzers and the, they, they do.
Mortars.
What? Mortars down there, yeah. So that's all, pretty much, I know about it.
So, so Jeff, so is this an annual appointment? Is this in perpetuity till the fulfillment of the study commit, till the study makes a report? What, do you know anything about that?
It's a two, what, the, again, I cherry picked, I didn't want to go through five pages of stuff. And that's, just I blew it up so you could read it. The expectation is it will be monthly or quarterly for two to three years with a rotating reappointment.
Okay.
I jokingly said, "Do I have to run for planning board over and over again to stay on this?"
All right, yeah.
The deal is, they expect it to take three or four years at this point, and the goal is 2030 and 2033. So it's probably not even going to end. But you all know my interest in MRPC, my interest in Devon's Enterprise, and so it's where I'd like to be. I think there's going to be opportunities for more of us to participate going forward in the future. I know it might be something that Mr. King is really interested in, so.
Is this a fait accompli? Are you already a, a member of this committee? Is, is, is our vote, have we done it, or do you?
I am going to ask for a vote, because what the Select Board said was, "Hey, we can make the committee bigger, can't we?" And they had a motion to let everybody be on it, with the expectation that I was going to be a member of the planning board on it. So we got to fill that role either way.
Okay.
Nobody was sent home.
Well, I think that you would be an ideal candidate to represent the planning board, you know, given all your experience here and what you know of the town and Devon's, I think. Yeah, so I think I'm allowed to make a motion, as Jeff, so I, I move to nominate Jeff Tilson as our representative to this Devon Study Committee.
Seconded.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, it's unanimous. Thank you, Jeff.
Very much.
Congratulations.
And I appreciate it. And for anybody who asks, Danny has a copy of the presentation, and copies are here in the room for anybody who would like a copy to go home with.
Can you bring it?
I was unable to get it done in time for the agenda last week. I didn't know till Tuesday, until, I didn't know in time.
Excellent.
Thank you.
So now, we come to the, really what's going to be the fun part of this meeting. We've often said that we are so busy, so enveloped by applications, that we often don't have the time to really do the more engaging work of looking ahead and seeing how can we set up air for the future. And fortunately, before Mark left, he had some suggestions. And Danny has reviewed these and has comments to say about them, but also has his own ideas about these. So what I'd like to do is, I'd like to turn the floor over to Danny, just open up the discussion of, of these recommendations, your thoughts on that, and of course, all of us can leap in with our own concerns and additions of things that we think would be important to review. Danny, it's yours.
So before, like the Chair said, you know, Mark had left some recommendations that I found, and just reviewing them sparked some more review of the planning board rules and regs, the subdivision rules and regs, site plan. So I just kind of tried to review all of the bylaws and regulations that we had, still kind of working through all of them, but there are.
Wait, what? You've been on the job eight days.
Come on, come on, come on, it's good.
So it's, it's.
In his defense.
Ken has memorized.
In his defense, in Danny's defense, I spent one of his lunches with him, so he got nothing done.
It was, it was good to catch up with you and, and get to know you.
He says that here.
So the first one that Mark had put together, recommendation was, was to revisit the Air Planning Board rules and regs, to update as needed based upon actual practice as it's occurred over the years since they were adopted in 2018. It would also be good to check for consistency with the air zoning bylaw.
Yep.
And site plan and subdivision regulations.
Can't fault that.
So that one's going to be a little bit more of an extensive look, trying to compare all, all of those together to make sure there's no, you know, inconsistency between the three, and making sure that they all line up properly. Like the first, I know in the Planning Board Rules and Regs, there's a, there's discussion of the A and R, and approval for, approval not required, and that there was a submission of an A1 form. Typically, I have, that's not anything that's actually done, because A and Rs aren't approved by our planning board, they're endorsed by our planning board, so there's a very big difference. You're not actually making a decision, you're just saying that this meets the bylaws, all the zoning regs. So there's like, you know, little things like that. So that would be removed, you know. The next one he had was revisit the Air Site Plan Regulations to, to update as needed. Since the pre-2017 existing site plan regulations were quite inadequate, it was important to get something on the books quickly in 2018. As a consultant, on the air zoning bylaw was very specific when it comes to site design, open space, landscaping, parking, and other site issues. In the bylaw, the site plan regulations refer back to bylaw sections for guidance on specific design issues. The planning board, perhaps with the assistance of a consultant, can craft fine-tuned provisions and/or specify when specific bylaw provisions should apply or be modified. So I agree with this one. I think one of the, the things that we can do for this is doing a comparison to a lot of the other towns around air.
Of comparable size.
Of comparable size, and seeing what it is their site plan regulations call for. So I know a lot of other towns have a minor site plan review, which is, you know, something for a smaller use, where, like, in, in, in air would be a change of a use. That's where something I would see where a minor site plan, minor site plan review would go. And with minor site plan review, typically, it's not a public hearing, it's a public meeting. So there would be no notifications because of it's, it's minor.
Yep.
You know, it, it helps get smaller projects through planning board so that they're not caught up with all the reviews, because it's not as necessary. And the timeframes, typically, you know, submission, legal notices, and, you know, two weeks out, 14-day periods for the postings. So it kind of, you know, extends the permitting process on regular site plan review, and doing a minor one would just kind of expedite it.
In no way, shape, or form, and I oppose to this. I am sensitive to the fact that we live in a town, in a, in a, in a community that doesn't have a reputable and dependable source of news. So if we're going to take the step forward, I would ask that the board consider this become part of a regular report in a meeting. The last thing I want to hear from somebody is, "I didn't know any about, I didn't know about that. How did you do that? You did it in the back room."
I don't get it. I'm, I'm not sure of report on what.
So if, if we're going to do a minor report, minor, minor reviews that are allowed in a meeting, not in a public, not have a hearing?
Yep.
We need to be upfront about, about letting the community know that these are happening.
Yes.
That's all I'm saying.
So it would be on the agenda.
Yeah, it would be on the agenda, so.
That's all, that's, I'm just double-checking.
Yes, yeah.
That would be great.
It would not be behind the scenes.
No, it's the same, but it's the same thing for our form-based code. I could bring you a product, you say, "Yeah, it's fine, it goes on the agenda." So.
But we don't go through the whole process.
I have some thoughts on this one in particular. So first, about the first two items, I, the first two, I assume, are things that you'll initiate and that you'll be working on. Just give us periodic updates about where you are on these two, so it doesn't, I don't want the ball to be dropped. If you can make that part of your project status update to include your review of the board regulations, rules and regulations, and the site plan regulations, just include that in your, in the ordinary project update, so that we know where we are, where you are, but also so that we can help you with different things. Now, this third one, the minor site plan provisions, I'm hoping that we can, I hope we could fast-track that, because it's, that one's a gap that we felt for a while, it'd be great. And I have the following three points. One is, I think it's absolutely critical that we define what minor means with numbers. And what I would like you to do is if you would craft a proposal, I mean bullet points, literally, I'm not talking about formal language, I would like us to review it and, and give Danny some feedback and have open discussion and open public meeting about what would minor consist. And further, I think it would be a good idea to have the land use committee give their own eyeball and have it to, "I don't want to spring this on them, this is an idea for a minor site plan review." And the rest of the land use group in town hall not be aware, I'd like to just at least get their feedback. And finally, and this is probably the most obvious one, and I think it, it lines up with what Jeff was saying, that the conclusion of this process, I would love it on the website if there was a guidance that people would know, "Oh, do I need a site plan? Or do I need a minor? Here are the differences." That would be wonderful. That's, that's my point.
It's going to be in the regulation.
Yeah. So, but I, yes, not just in the regulations.
The regulations are on the, on the vote.
But you know what, though? I know they are. But I would also like, just like a simple, like, if you have two, three paragraphs as an own standalone, what do you need? Because the kind of person who needs a minor site plan is not the same kind of person as a sophisticated reader of regulations, that's the difference. And I can think of a couple of things that have come before us, where, you know, they don't have an attorney, they don't have an engineer, but if the information were posted on the web, at least have a starting point for the conversation with you, and you can confirm, "Yes, ma'am, this is, this is a minor, we can put that on the agenda," and blah, blah, blah. That's what I mean, Ken.
And, Mr. Chair, you brought something to mind.
What's that?
We had to a food truck eighteen months ago.
That's what I was thinking of, yes.
A food truck.
A food truck.
And this is an offline conversation, I'm more than happy to.
We'll bring you up.
I was, I was Chair at the time, and a lot of departments had to get involved, because the town didn't do those.
Well, so the board health issue, too.
Agreed.
Okay, great. So I, we're, I, I think what you're hearing here is we're all enthusiastic.
Yeah. And, and another thing on that minor site plan, so I, I agree with you on, you know, standards of specifically calling out what's the difference between, and I would have a different application for it, too. It would be, you'd have a major site plan, which is your normal one, and then you'd have a minor site plan application as well. That way, there's no confusion, you, you'll have a checklist on each one, what the standard is and what needs to be submitted within.
Excellent.
All right, so the next one he had was clarify the allowable number of dwelling units for residential projects proposed within the general business district. As Park South, Park Street north of the downtown Park Street FBC district and Fitchburg Road redeveloped, there will be more inquiries about constructing multifamily housing in this district and perhaps in other general business zoned areas of town, perhaps the DAPS FBC district.
Downtown, Air, High Street.
Air, Park Street, Form Based Code.
Form Based Code, district.
Tell them, annoy them when you have them, when you need them.
Can be extended to the, the north, a bit further along Park Street. So on this one specifically, I have not done enough looking into this one. Is, so I'll have to look in the, the regulations to see if there's a calculation.
There is a calculation.
There is, and I'm going to, Mr. Chair, if I may.
Yes, please, sir.
Danny, you could find a huge amount of information from Mr. Diskin on this.
Oh, jeez.
However, I'm going to say something.
All up here, right?
I think the current, if I read the tea leaves in town, we've got a lot of zoning districts that don't allow multifamily, and I think as we're looking into the crystal ball, it's a two-track conversation.
I agree.
So we focus on general business, because it's here, and that's where I think we're going to see, but I think, and, and, and dare I say, put parking in the same bucket. Required parking.
We're about to get to parking, so, so.
I don't read ahead.
Can, the Affordable Housing Group is also doing a review of, of zoning and the, and the potential opening it up to having multifamilies in A1, A2, et cetera, is that correct?
They were looking at a number of parts of the zoning to try to go to a future town meeting.
I would.
They have to start, now that Danny's on board, we'll, of course, we'll ask him to be.
And I think this is a common truth. What I would like to do is have this review, the, the multi, instead of having independent general business.
Yeah.
Coordinate with the people working on the affordable housing review of these, because we may end up in a place where there should be a recommendation at town meeting that multiple zoning districts should be open to multifamily and not restricted to single family. And that's a, a powerful discussion, it's going to take some, some groundwork first before we even get at the town meeting, but we can at least begin here with the work that you gentlemen are doing.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I may.
Yes, sir.
Danny, you may want to also develop some kind of a planning matrix of how all these things roll out to a, um, to a town meeting, because on the next page, talk about zoning on number eight. We'll get to that. Zoning here, uh, definitely what we're doing on the Affordable Housing Committee. Apply parking, I think definitely, definitely applies. It's the, and changing the number of dwelling units, because at least what, what makes it gel for me in, in my head, big picture, is, is the, a vision that the population of air very well may increase.
Mm-hmm.
And should, uh, increase in the next decade, decades. And so we need to be ready for that. Two, one more I'll drop in there is, uh, two more. I think we did something on accessory dwellings.
Yup.
We did, we did introduce that.
We have a, we have to clean it up. It's.
Yeah.
Might be a little bit too tough.
What we learned in last meeting, too, was maybe we do need to look at size, minimum size. I don't, um, putting it again to get, um, more housing, more affordable housing. And then Pandora's Box, which is, uh, short-term rentals. And I, and I'd say this, because we get many more apartments in this town. It's, it, there may be, it may draw investors. I'm saying this is, I'm saying this is good or bad, but be aware, it may draw, um, for short-term rentals, especially with, um, the industrial complex nearby, people needing short-term housing.
That's a good point.
So I think the, you know, get that all out, draw it up into a matrix.
Yeah.
And find out which makes sense to group into a town meeting.
Yeah. And, and a lot of these aren't, you know, most, most of these aren't something that's going to happen, you know, this year or next year. A lot of these are going to take some time to go through, you know, like the, uh, the, uh, the housing, the number of dwelling units for the residential, figuring that out, um, as well as the, uh, updating zoning maps and figuring out, like the, like the mullen rule, that's something that could go in for this, this fall town meeting. But there's things that are going to, when you, when you're coming up with a lot of these new bylaws, proposed bylaws or amendments, workshops are going to be very important to get the public out there and understanding what's being proposed, so that it doesn't look like it sprung on them at a town meeting.
And I think what I'm asking is to logically group things.
Yeah.
So that when we make a presentation to the public, um, that it's, it, it's cohesive.
Yeah.
That we're making these, we're not just, it might look like change, 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 but it's because there's a vision.
The overall.
That we're going for, 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 for the town of air.
Okay.
Yeah. Didn't mean to get you off the rails there, Danny.
One of the problems you're gonna find in all that review that you do, and I just reminded me, because I saw the word general business, is there are plenty of places in town where they do not refer to the Form Based Code districts, where they still refer to it as general business.
Okay.
So you're gonna be, just, you'll see that when you go home.
Okay.
So sometimes, like the West Main Street stuff, I don't think they've converted a lot of the, the stuff to the West, whatever it is, West Air Village Form Based Code.
Okay.
Still calling it general business.
They're still calling it general, okay.
It's in, you know, parts of the regulations and other stuff like that, that you'll see.
Yeah, because there's a, it's, the Form Based Code has its own separate section, right?
Right.
Yeah.
In the, on the follow-up of all the regulations and stuff, it still may be called out as general business.
Okay.
But I'm, I'm not so sure this is, I'm not so sure we are gonna have a lot of requests for dwelling units in general business anyway, but we're looking at all, looking at everything, so.
Listen.
We're gonna, the, the bigger question is, how many calculated in the general residence?
Yeah.
But we have a mathematical thing there.
I thought the fire station was general business.
No, that's Form Based Code. It ended like the house beyond it.
That's right, that's right, because I, I know we had a conversation about it. I couldn't remember the particulars.
The Form Based Code district.
Yeah.
Okay.
Cool.
Okay, simplify the park.
Yeah.
We know the way it gets.
Uh, simplify the parking regulations of section 9.1 of the air zoning bylaws. I have prepared a draft of such reorganized section.
Now, this I'm a little confused about, because there seem to be two related issues. One is simplifying and clarifying what's there, but this is also this issue of reviewing parking and what's, the demands are. Which one is this? Is this simply cleaning up what's there, or is this the major effort to really review what are parking, what we recommend for parking?
I think this one is just more merely cleaning it up.
Okay.
But I agree with you that I think there has to be some sort of a, uh, review study of what parking regulations would be needed.
That's a much bigger can of worms. I'll be with you one second, Jeff.
Yeah, no.
I think that, so I think I would say green light on, on a cleanup that you could show to us to look at, but whole, on, the whole review, um, that's something that I want to talk to other people in town, particularly I want to talk to Alan Menoyan, because I want to think about how we present this and how we move it forward, what kind of meetings to require, what kind of charrettes, what kind of public discussion, education, et cetera, and really lay it out before we make any suggestions at town meeting.
Mm-hmm.
Because otherwise, we'll just get hammered.
So, yeah, cars, automobiles is sacred. That is a sacred cow in this town. Number one. Number two, I can tell you right now, DATL, um, grants that come from MRPC, they have never done a parking study. Not since.
Oh, boy.
They have not done a parking study. The ITU, the International Transportation, whatever, you can tell me what it is.
ITU?
Yeah, IT. We're in version five now. MRPC stopped buying them in version three, because they didn't have a need for them, okay? Now, MAPC has done it, the Middlesex. Remember last two weeks ago, we were sitting there going, "Guys, you brought the wrong data to this table?" You're lucky you came in the door, right?
Oh, jeez.
So, um, it's, for the standpoint that we can't even get grant help, who are up to speed with what's going on, so I would say, yeah, separation is really, really good. And I'm also gonna say, um, sometimes cleaning up is to fix it so it's retroactive and prescriptive, based on what happened before, as opposed to cleaning it up so that it can be a tool we can use going forward, which is a little more easy to understand. Just, because, you know, oftentimes bylaws and regulations get changed because something happened. Well, it's never gonna happen again, so why do we do that? And then we just end up with, stuck with our decision.
Yeah. So is the big parking task an additional to this?
Yes.
Yeah, that's going to be an additional, uh, to this.
Regarding the mullen rule, I think we've discussed this multiple times informally around this table. Um, what I would ask you, Danny, is that what does it take to get that on, uh, the warrant article drafted and put on, you know, get it onto town meeting?
Mm-hmm.
I, I, I think that this would be merit of conversation of Robert and/or Carley.
Yes.
And perhaps Town Council to make sure that it's worded correctly.
If I may?
Yes, please.
Just, 'cause I, I, after Attorney Givens brought that to our attention at a meeting, my conversation with Robert made me feel this was not a planning, like it's ours to bring forward, that it's come to our meeting and it's something we want our town to do, but I thought it would be more Robert and the select boards figuring it out, but.
Adopted across all.
It would be adopted across everybody.
But I don't believe it's ours to carry, but I could be wrong. I, I just.
But you probably, it probably, Julie, you may be right, but we may want to carry it, just because we're feeling it.
Well, to make sure it happens, for sure.
We're feeling the pinch.
Heck, yeah.
Apparently more than some of the other committees and boards.
Yeah.
We missed one, we've had it twice this year, once this year. Town Hall closed, we had a meeting. It's going to be difficult to hold hearings, to get drafted, get approval. October 30th is the meeting this year, so you gotta have, actually have anything done in September. Which means we have to have hearings in August.
I, I, I have to look at the, take a look at the schedule.
Take a look at the schedule for town meeting.
I don't want to stop you.
Yeah.
But if you're gonna be so close to the wire, it's a challenge.
Yeah.
I would say this, if we can do it in October, I would love if we could.
Mm-hmm.
Because we just keep running into it all the time. And see what kind of support you can get to see what we can do to get the hearings, get it all online. I mean, and it shouldn't be you alone. I think that's why it has to talk to Robert and say, "Who's gonna help you?"
Right. That is not ours to own.
Right. It's not on your shoulders. It's, it's the whole town, but you might be the fire, you know?
Yeah, and this one does, uh, it affects us a lot. It does.
Very much.
And I don't mind speaking to that, because I think I've been more vocal about that in my examples, so keep me in the loop if I can help.
Yeah.
I want a clarification on this before we move on.
Please, sir.
So I'm reading his paragraph, and it says that this is only involved with a special permit. Is that fact?
No.
I didn't think so.
It's for every application.
Right, so let's, that needs clarification.
Yes, that would be, yeah.
This is a statute that if adopted at a town meeting, will allow a member to miss a meeting and still vote on a special permit.
They could vote it, yeah.
But that, and that's when Tom Givens brought it up, was we were voting on a special permit that had it on our agenda for his, his, his representative, he was representing, and he was concerned that four might not carry it if it was only four members here instead of five. He wanted to make sure he had a full board.
Yeah.
Available to vote on.
And a quorum is three.
That was the request.
Excuse me?
And a quorum is three.
I know, but the special permit requires.
Special permit is a majority. Super, super majority.
Super majority. So that was his concern, so that's why I'm concerned, I was looking for that language. It's not just special.
Yeah, this paragraph is not the language.
Right.
So let's be clear. This is just, for this discussion, this is not the warrant article language.
I'm not talking about that. I'm just saying, it's more than a special permit.
Absolutely it is.
You need to double check that.
Correct. And I agree, and I understand, I understand what Attorney Givens was asking for in that specific example, but sometimes you gotta wait.
That's true.
The world happens, and Attorney Givens knows that.
Yeah, it was fine.
Yeah.
It all worked out.
Yep. And so, this board, uh, does not have an alternate?
No, we need an alternate.
We need an alternate. Danny, if you went through our meeting minutes, I'd say for the first, last seven years, you're gonna find that there's always five people at this table. Very rarely do we take vacation, or very rarely does something else come up. Honestly, think about it.
It's close.
I think we, I think we struggled for quorum maybe twice while I was chair, and I was chair for five or six years.
But an alternate, forgive me for speaking and interrupting, but an alternate would be extremely helpful to anyone who wants to volunteer.
Alternate support.
Because it's, it is a lot of stress and.
I'm not disagreeing with that, but I'm just, we gotta, we got, we got good attendance in, in this group, so.
And, and so I, I do understand that, but it also, I think in the, in the sense of if someone has to recuse themselves due to a, you know, for a project. You are then stuck with only four, and the alternate cannot sit in. So I, it would be nice to have an alternate, but, you know.
We can have two.
Anyone wants to join. But, uh, yeah, I, I understand that, you know, typically you don't miss a meeting.
We went months with a member not coming and not communicating with us before that.
Number seven.
Okay, so number, number seven. Clarify several of the class of use in section 5.2 in the Table of Regulations, especially lines 1.5 and 1.7, which were brought to light during the review of 14 Washington Street and the special permit cases. My suggestion is 1.5, conversion of non-residential building to mixed-use building or multifamily dwellings. So, the Table of Use Regulations, that's something that I think we should talk with the building inspector, or building commissioner as well, um, as he's the zoning enforcement officer, so he's going to be enforcing those, the uses, and he sees a lot of the uses more frequently than I would on that, in, you know, in terms of that. So I think that's something that I would have to really communicate with Charlie about this, to really move, uh, to see where we can go with that.
And he's, he's on board with taking a look at this.
Okay.
So, we have some issues there. We lack some classes completely of use.
I think Ken is your point person. You're on the board for this review.
Yes.
I hope this isn't offending anywhere else, but I would work closely with Ken and Charlie on this one.
Okay.
This amend the official zoning map, that's just a matter of business, right?
Yes, yes, because, uh, you, uh, the board had re, town meeting rezoned the two lots, which are 27 and 29 Harvard, which actually has made a submission, so they will be coming to us. Uh, but yes, so that would need to be updated.
May I ask an ancillary question to this? It's my, now that it's on the table, my understanding is the new lots that were rezoned by the town meeting, the activities happening on those new lots are not in compliance with our bylaws.
That's correct.
With many bylaws, including sanitation, Board of Health bylaws. And the question is, is there anything we can do for, um, what can we do about enforcement?
Yes.
And, I'll stop right there, 'cause, yeah.
Let's stop there. I just want to assure you that this, this has not been neglected.
Yeah.
And this is a conversation in progress, yes.
I fully understand. I just wanna, someone's gonna be watching, they're gonna ask, so.
Yeah, and we're all watching, we're concerned, and.
Yeah.
Yeah, we're gonna, we're gonna discuss this, believe me.
Yes.
Thank you. Now the fun stuff.
Yes.
Give them the news about the fee schedule.
All right, so, uh, I was, I looked at the planning board's fee schedule, and it is, it's, based on my review, it's, it's outdated in the sense of it's one of the lower fees, lowest fee schedules that I've seen in most, in any town that I've worked with. I think the fee schedule should be updated, and, and to, to do that, what I will do is I will review the fee schedule for all the surrounding towns in, near air, and I will expand my, uh, my search to other towns throughout Massachusetts, just varying locations to get a, a, a good, you know, variation of the fee schedules that they have. I'll put a list together, a, a breakdown with all the towns, all their sched, all their fee schedules, what for site plan review, how they calculate it, subdivision, A and Rs, all those, and then we can reconvene at one, at a public hearing and discuss all the information.
And do, does the planning board have the authority to adjust the fees ourselves? We don't, do we have to get select board approval?
Uh, so, uh, I will confirm that, but I believe in the planning board rules and regs, uh, you're allowed to amend your planning board fee schedule.
And, uh, and I'm probably stating the obvious, but for like, when we do the minor site plan, that would actually have, that would have a different fee, of course, than a major, than a ordinary site plan.
Okay, that is correct. Mr. Chair?
I could see you're ready to say something.
I would love, should Mr. Ruiz need any help with this in doing his research, I would love to be consulted.
There's your guy.
I lost this argument seven years ago.
Okay.
But from my, the best, my memory, there's, there's no date that says when those fee schedules were revised the last time. If you could figure that out, 'cause it's been recent, it's been in the last three years.
Does it?
Yeah.
Uh, before the.
Mark, yeah, we did it with Mark recently, last few years.
It was 2017.
Yeah.
2017.
It's been a while.
Six years, six years. Before that, it might have been a lot longer even.
But it's, um, the economics of building and development have changed dramatically.
Yes.
And it used to be seen that a fee was punitive and a barrier to entry. Nope. Eight hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars for a brand-new house in air, we can get him another fifty bucks from him.
Okay.
Yeah, so.
To Danny, no, just one.
In my experience with, especially with site plan review, that's one of the, that's definitely the one that I saw that just popped out to me.
Yep. Does this include building permits?
No.
It's not under.
No.
One of the things that, um, attracts people to air is it's affordable. So I, I think that as we survey, um, we should also consider keeping, um, keeping air affordable.
So, if, if I may, we can't set the price of a house in, we, uh, uh, to run the unit, we can't set that. The town of air, the negotiations for air commons, and I'm not gonna get it exact, forgave almost all the fees, with the exception of the fees we have to contract for outside of our payroll. So a lot of those fees we're talking about for air commons were negotiated.
They were only partially negotiated, Ellen.
This is true, but they were, they were negotiated.
There was some negotiation.
Yeah, some negotiations on them. Yeah, so in situations where that happens, yes.
Don't we have the ability in our, in our rules to waive the fees anyway?
Yes.
As long as we maintain the ability to waive stuff in our regulations, we could take a look at something if, if they thought, if the applicant thought it was punitive.
And, and that combined with making sure there's a differential between, you know, a site plan for a hundred units and somebody wants to add it, you know what I mean?
Yeah.
The minor.
Yes.
That's why I agree with that.
As you look across the fee schedules, there's fees for large projects, businesses, certainly there's a fair rate for that. But I'm, my concern is more as we get smaller projects.
Exactly.
That, that we are.
Yep.
Still attractive.
Yes, I agree. So, uh, to speak to that point, you know, with, like, uh, site plan review, usually what you see is there is a calculation for the actual site plan review of, of fee, based on square footage or impervious area, gross floor area, like, there's a lot of different types of calculations. That way, exactly that, you don't have that problem, so that the smaller projects, there is no, I'm not, like, why should a smaller project pay as much as a, like, a, a big 100, you know, unit residential development?
Right.
So it, it, it allows some flexibility within that, so that it's calculated. Certain amount of fairness is baked into the process.
Number 10, sir?
Yes. Um, review section 10.1, approval not required, A and R plans. So this is the section that I spoke about earlier, removing the Form A1.
Nice.
That, that way we don't have to do that, 'cause that's not something that we do anyways. Um, review the plant, the current planning board applications to see if they should be updated. Create, uh, the following new applications. Minor site plan review, uh, I also want to create a, uh, an application for, uh, major or minor modifications of a site plan approval. So I think for that one, we want to come up with a standard as to what is major, what is minor. Um, and I think that's something that we can discuss, uh, with the board, you know, all together, as to what do you guys deem as a major modification, and what is, what could be deemed as a minor modification.
To echo Jonathan's earlier comment, with numbers, please.
Exactly.
Or examples, but make it qualitative.
It has to.
Yeah, qualitative.
Mm-hmm. And, uh. Yeah, so I would be looking for you to, if you could help us by starting with some, you know, suggested ballparks for major minor, and then we can have a meaningful discussion.
Mm-hmm.
That would be great. So, on the whole, I'm very pleased with this, this list and your additions to it. I think these are good things to work on. Would you, I feel that in terms of priority.
Yeah, but can you go ahead just?
Go ahead.
If you go back to 10, I'm looking at the, what I believe are the planning board's rules and regulations.
Mm-hmm.
Now, maybe I got the wrong copy. This says from April 5th of 2018, amended April 18 and April 19, and adopted May 8th of 2000. And this here, this says, and under the A and R section, it says completion of a Form A application, not A1.
Uh, so it's at the end on section, uh, number five, uh, distribution of copies.
10.1.
It says petitioner, Form A1 only.
Okay, got it.
Those. So it would just be the plan that gets distributed to all those, uh, all the departments. The Form A1 would not be.
Okay. But is there a difference between A and A1? Do we know?
Yeah.
Alan Menoyan does some discrediting before I start.
Okay.
Yeah, a Form A is just, is, it's just the application for an A and R.
Any A and R.
Yes, exactly. An A1 form is something that I have never seen.
Okay, so we'll get rid of that, obviously, thank you.
I was just thinking, because there's so many things here that have priorities, and people feel free to dispute me on this. But I think about the things that we'd like fast-track, are the minor site plan revisions, and whatever collaboration you can get with Town Hall with pushing that Mullen Rule forward.
Yes.
Because it seems that among the boards, that we're the one that's feeling that perhaps the most deeply.
Well, Board of Appeals, too.
Is that?
Board of Appeals, that would run into that as well.
And so, for, actually, for the Mullen Rule, so I have a, I'm trying to set up a land use meeting on, for next Thursday, to discuss the projects that we have going before the planning board. I think at that point, I can also discuss this Mullen Rule.
Nice, great.
Thanks.
Oh, this is all wonderful stuff. So, does that include our future goals and plans, or is that a separate bullet point for discussion? Do you have any thoughts on that, that we haven't covered yet?
No. Unless the board has some that they want to.
I have a housekeeping thing, I looked at future goals and plans, I'm looking at next year's planning board schedule. And December 26th falls on the day, on the day of Canadian Christmas, or whatever it is. Just so you know, around Thanksgiving and Christmas time, because it's like, things just get really jiggled around here, so we're not gonna change it now, but as that comes forward, you'll see.
Yeah, so, actually, this is just a draft, I have not posted it anywhere.
Yeah.
And that's why we wanted, I wanted to kind of discuss it. I know, like, around, you know, the November and December dates, that's usually where, and July is where it's, you know, iffy on meetings. And so, what I would do is, each year, I would create a new one, just, you know, with an updated each date. This is for this year's, and so, if the board is okay with, with these, I can have it stamped in and put on the website.
Anything that's going to keep us from receiving data the day of the meeting?
Yeah, obviously.
That's exactly why at the bottom of this...
I'm perfectly cool with this. Lexington does this, and I love it, so.
So, just to revise, just to go over this, so, public meeting submission and public hearing submission. So, the public meeting, you feel that you still have enough time to get on, get the public meeting on the agenda and whatnot by giving that date?
Yes.
The date before that is, because we have to take out an advertisement, notify butters, or whatever the procedure might be?
That is correct.
Okay, thanks.
And as we, and I'm just looking forward to December, if we find that there's, many members won't be available during December 26th, or there's not a whole lot of activity, we can waive that, right?
Yes, that is correct. Can we typically have that figured out by late October?
Usually, we do.
Our families are starting to figure out where's going, who's going where, at what time, so.
Yeah, I mean, I think many people would be sympathetic to the fact that the day after Christmas...
Yes.
It's boxing.
Some people would rather be here.
Yes. All right. I, I guess, you know, one of my, you know, in terms of future goals and plans, I really think this list is, is key. We did the master plan review, we're about ready to finalize that. Ken and I are gonna follow up with D P W about the trails we discussed earlier, you know? So, we had three in motion of the four. We want to see where those three are in progress, and we'll get back to you with that. In terms, another thing that we had was a, a future goals and plans, was that, was that zoning review of, and that's already been initiated with the combination of the Affordable Housing Group and what you suggested. I think the only other future, big future thing we haven't really talked about, we touched on a little bit earlier, is like accessory, accessory units, and what's the word for a temp, short-term rental? Yeah, those are things we need to look at. So, that's...
I think the accessory will come up when we're looking at the zoning review.
I think so, too.
For affordable housing. And the calculation for the requirement, you know, inclusionary zoning that we require, and how many unit, we're gonna need some help on that in real time, when, when we look at West Main Street. I'm not sure Danny's aware of that or not, but...
The inclusionary housing for that one?
Yeah, they, they proposed a count. But we have to counter, we agree with that count or not.
Okay.
Go through it.
You're talking about West Main Street?
Yeah.
Yeah. The other thing about accessory dwelling and, with their, with short-term rentals, we've written our accessory dwelling bylaw, so that it states family member. And we believe we wrote it that way for lots of different reasons, but, but it has to be, you know, it, so it won't turn into a short-term rental, and maybe a quick bruise of that, just to make sure.
Yeah, it's a good idea.
It, it, we're not anti-vacation, we're anti-rental stock, which is very limited being used, when it could be used for somebody, kid, it's an expensive town for kids to come back to. It's an expensive town for seniors to grow, to, because you live in. So, anything we can do to make it work?
Two, thank you. Any project status updates for us? And not just Danny, but anyone around the table who's aware of some of the things that we've worked on? Anything to update to discuss before we close out?
I walked into Panther Place a couple Sundays ago, and ran into Joel Veen, I think I might have told you about him. But one thing I did notice, which we should take a look at, or maybe Heather has taken a look at it, all the rain has basically filled those cul-de-sacs to the brim, or overflowed them, where they are proposed rain gardens at the, at the end of the day, when it's finished, and it's, it does have binder on everything. But it looks like there's an erosion problem because of all the weather that we've had. And I don't think we think too strongly about protecting that outflow. It's kind of just tearing up the area.
Do we, I'm curious, are there silt sacks in the...
On the perimeters, there are. You know, the whole thing has got a perimeter.
Well, I understand the perimeter fencing, but if there's binder down, which means there's stormwater control built in...
Not really, because, you know, the, the grates covers are about inch high, they're up for finish.
That's what I'm getting to, is oftentimes, either the grates are high, the gate, the castings are high, or there are silt sacks required in the castings.
Both.
And what happens when you get a casting that's not high, and a construction area, that first quarter-inch rain that comes, or first-inch rain that comes in three minutes, like we've been having, just fills that silt sack, and that silt sack is...
Useless.
Useless.
So, that's all I'm pointing out, is that, I haven't seen that before, because the weather's been bad. But I noticed that the interior section of the cul-de-sacs has overflowed right over the road. Okay, so it's obviously not piped out, and part of the work is not done yet.
They're just temporary raises or something.
Yeah. Something, something needs to be touched up. I'm sure if we brought it up, he'd probably take care of it, but that's different.
I noticed some flooding a few weeks ago in the shopping safe parking lot, where they're doing work, and I suspect that that is part of, one, the elevated casting, because there only a binder, they have it finished. And the second one is probably even more relevant, is probably there were silt sacks there, and they just filled up in the first half hour, and that was it, you know?
Yeah, that's the toughest part about silt sacks, it's like, if you have a really big rainstorm that comes really quickly, they, they just don't work anymore. They get filled up so quickly. Especially if they're, if they haven't been cleaned that week, you know, then it's, yeah.
Okay, great. Anything else?
I think everything else is sold out, as far as we know. The Aho Project is sold out. And Chirway, the Curly Circle is sold out.
Is Catania closed? Do they, they have all their permits wrapped up?
Catania.
Catania or Nissau area?
Catania.
Catania? I don't know.
Catania, I thought that was done a long time ago. Talking about the oils?
Yeah. Oh, that project's been completed.
It's been done for a long time.
Oh, yeah. As a matter of fact, and I happen to be over in that area, we, Friday afternoon, was it? Or was it, I was here, Bonnie was away over the weekend, and we got an inch and a quarter rain.
Heavy rain.
Actually, Littleton got four inches. So, yeah, so, between here and, friends of mine live on the other side of the pond from Catania, they got three to four inches in an hour. And Catania's system held up.
When was this?
It was last weekend, last Friday, yeah, oh, yeah. Yeah, Bonnie left on Friday morning, it was Friday afternoon. I was watching my rain gauge, and it went from zero to .21 to .54. It's like 12 minutes later, you know, it's crazy how fast it went up.
You're saying that you, you looked at the outflow, and it never reached that outflow?
I didn't go over to look at it, but I was, after it rained, I had to shoot over to the stock, to the, the Star Market. And I always look in the, I always look around when I'm driving down there, and there was no water. I mean, there was, you know, the basins in front that are down low there, they weren't appreciably full of water either, but the parking lots weren't crazy.
It's not working.
It, it looks like it's working.
It's because we have professional engineers.
It's crazy. Wouldn't believe what they put underneath that, underneath the ground over there. I just mentioned...
Sub-service systems, enormous, enormous.
There was supposed to be guardrail put in from Nemco Way to the parking lot.
Oh, really?
Anything else?
Thank you. Well, since you're pointing at me, I will just say, I know we talked about people's perfect attendance, but I will not be at our next meeting.
Understood, thank you.
That's why I brought it up.
Yeah, oh, yeah. Everyone else is perfect.
54, 56 Littleton Road, I must, I think that's Curly...
Curly Circle.
They are going to be going for street acceptance in the fall.
Wow.
Dan has sent the, the developer a kind of a breakdown as to...
Punch list.